I think all the representative staff and guests we have this evening and Democrats who met with them to see the information of President Denny and Thorsten Berg, I mean, good decisions for our district. Thank you that we continue to be prosperous in our district, and continue to watch over us, to ensure protection over its vitality as we go into the holidays for Thanksgiving. I ask your protection over everyone, of our families, our students, our staff, our community, to just watch over us and protect us from any dangers. And I think that you continuously be with us as we get down to our meetings. Just grant the tribe the grace as we may, our way home.
On the record, we've got all four members present to take action with Mr. Coleman. Please stand for the presentation.
All the guard, hands up. Eric, all the. All the, all. All the guard, all. All the guard, all. All. East, hands, arms.
Please stand before the president. At the end of this, we say, "In America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
And now for the Texas part.
One under Texas law, how can allegiance to be? Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Order, arms. Oh. All the guard, all.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome everyone. Certainly cool outside. So it's time for celebration, which is always a fun part of our meetings. And so certainly want to publicly thank anyone, everyone who voted in this past election. Certainly excited to bond past, so thank you to. So I'm looking around, Ms. Williams, why in the auditorium is she? Oh, that's you. After going to state, we recognize we'll be swearing her in at the December board meeting. With that said, as this time, I will turn over the house.
All right, so we have several celebrations tonight. So as Dr. Davis said, preliminary results have gone past. So we are so excited and definitely excited about the fact that there were more than 5,900 residents that voted in the selection. So saw it, definite increase than the last time. Okay, so on October 29th, we had our first fall festival. And this was a great collective effort from many departments and student programs and community partners. Just naming a few, and I don't want to leave anyone out, but our after-school program, our STEM program, our advanced academics, career and technical education. I'm sure there are numerous other ones that I did not mention, but definitely some community partnerships that we had. But this was a great event. We had hundreds in attendance. And then we even know, you know, it was next door to where one of our polling centers was. So that day, particular day on October 29th with early voting, it was more than 200 people that showed up to vote. So we're truly being that sum to that event that was over there. So this is definitely something that we want to make an annual event. And so we're looking forward to seeing how we can grow that and expand that.
As I was talking about, yeah, just want to get publicly, thank you, your team, Dr. Dermer. Yeah, Dr. Dermer, you and your team, and all those involved. Yeah. It certainly, as I showed up, it certainly suited my expectations. I wasn't sure how that would turn out with the weather and what happened. So the timing, yeah, it was good. Longbow, that'd be shot. Would it turn out, if you showed up and showed out, and so I appreciate you having me there. And that's adventurous.
Awesome. And then also on Election Day, November 8th, was also STEM Day. And so you'll see in the pictures on the screen where you're on the Z, who's in charge of our STEM program. She's shaking her head, driving the work that day. But we also, you know, students participated in different variety of activities. We had some doing Zoom with NASA, lessons from an oceanographer. We also had a turkey will challenge. So it was just a great, great day for students on that day. Okay, next, we are going to call up and recognize our band staff at King High School. So the marching band qualified for the UIL area this year. And this was the first time this has happened since 2018. So we're really proud of them. So we've got Elizabeth Moon, we've got Alejandro Cantu, we've got Josh Brezky, Renee Robles, and Aaron Hamilton. And if you guys would like to join us for a photo, and then we'd also like to invite Mr. Von Steele, our director of fine arts. So we'll do just a quick photo, but definitely want to recognize you guys. Congratulations. And then we are also recognizing a new partner in education. So you're familiar with our Adopt a School program. It's just business partners that really want to work exclusively with different campuses and provide different services and give back. Tonight, we want to recognize Elio with Keller Williams Real Estate. So if you want to come on up. And then we're also going to call up our principal from Carroll Elementary, who's going to be a guest. And they are, they are going to be adopted by Carroll Elementary. Just a little bit of background on him. He graduated from the Early College High School, and he's now realer. So he wants to share his knowledge, help his own community. He also has two sisters who attend school in the district.
Please grab that. So obviously, this is very special, but I love when somebody, a man or woman of the verb. I met him a little while ago, and he told me he'd be back. He told me he'd be back, come back and get back. You ready for him?
Okay, and then we have just one more slide to share, just something to mark calendars for. But we have the second Sheldon FFA Winter Project Showcase. So just want to make sure you save the date for this. It's December the 6th, from 4 to 7 p.m. And it's an event that hopes that FFA students prepare for their upcoming livestock show, which you guys are going to hear more from them at the December board meeting. So just make sure you mark your calendars for that one. And that's all we have.
All right, this is Galvez, too, Mrs. Galvez. She makes a lot more we could talk through at the last workshop, but it's kind of weird, dusty things. Just know we'll start at the day and work, still kind of need to go forward. There are lots of stuff, lots of stuff. So again, we'll start putting more of our reports on our board's agenda here in Los Angeles. We need to kind of finish out and start with the vision or something.
Thank you. All right, good evening. So from the Career and Technical Department, we have some innovative courses that we would like to propose for the next school year. So we'd like to share with you those three innovative courses. They do require board approval, and there will be action items on the board agenda for next month. So first of all, these are innovative courses for the high school only. They bear elective credit for grades nine through 12. And as you know, programs of study are really a sequence of CTE courses. They prepare students for a career. And with the work-based learning projects that the students are involved in, it also includes some real-world experiences. And within these programs of study, these sequences of courses, students are able to earn certification or license, or in some cases, college credit. And so tonight, we are sharing with you three innovative courses. One is Advanced Floral Design. The second is Legal Research and Writing. And the third is Introduction to Unmanned Aerial Vehicle Flight, which we kind of just say is drones for short, right? We started talking about drones last year. So first of all, when there's an ag cluster, we have the Plant Science Program of Study. And what we want to add is that 12th grade course that's in the box at the bottom of the course sequence called Advanced Floral Design. And Advanced Floral Design will give our students a little more time and skill to build even entrepreneurial skills with their floral design or Plant Science Program of Study. The certifications we listed over to the left. So within this program of study, students will be able to earn up to three certifications. But primarily, that last course, Advanced Floral Design, will give them the experience in specialty floral designs for event planning, planning budgets, like I said, for the entrepreneurship portion of floral enterprises. So that's one course that we're proposing. The second is in the Law and Public Service Cluster in the Legal Studies Program of Study. This is really going to help, and you'll see this will be a 10th grade course. And what you'll notice is there are more than four courses in the course sequence. What we're finding is that we have students who have taken all four courses, and they actually have room in their studies in their program to continue learning. So rather than just cap it at four, in some cases, we can replace some of those classes with a more advanced class or another class that's more enriching. In this case, Legal and Research Writing is going to support our English classes as well. So while students are in English 2, they'll also be developing their literacy skills through legal writing and legal research. And we all know that the type of vocabulary and the writing skills you have to develop in these specific courses. So we think it'll be twofold. It'll help them in their career plan or in their program of study. And it'll also lead to a certification in the Non-Commissioned Security Office, which is a Level 2 certification. The third innovative course is a ninth grade course, and it's Introduction to Unmanned Aerial Vehicle, or UAD Flight. As you know, last year, we offered this as the last, as a certification, the FAA drone pilot certification or license. We offered that as the last course under the Engineering Program Study. And TEA came out with us, you know, some new rules, as they always do. And now for our students to earn college career and military readiness credit for that drone piloting license, they actually have to take the complete four-year course sequence. So in order to do that, we have to introduce this beginning in ninth grade with the Introduction to Unmanned Aerial Vehicle Flight. That way, either way, they could get the license, but in this case, they also get acknowledgement for college career and military readiness. So it's a TEA thing, but I really do believe we're going to use this, if you approve it next month, to recruit more students into this specific program of study, rather than it being embedded in the engineering program. So that takes us to the end of where we are for the proposed innovative courses. Did you have any questions about them so far? All right, as you can see, this is a very intricate slide, so I'm sure you know who's coming up next.
I'm getting you into the season. Okay, so we're going to talk a little bit about bond facilities. We're going to start with our 2016 bond, just some current projects that we have going on. So looking at our 2016 bond, we have some King High School window film that's going in. That is going in in those classrooms that have the partition walls that retract. Currently, those windows are completely visible. You can see right through those. Those are completely transparent. So we are putting a film up that is more like, it's like a window tint, like a mirror window tint. So if there were ever to be an emergency, you know, Lord forbid something serious happen with a shooter on campus, those students in the classroom would not be visible from the hallway. So we're putting up a window tint on those classrooms, one classroom on each academy, and that's going to start on November 16th. So that actually starts this week. We've tried some out in the ROTC. It looks really good, just to help, you know, cover that. The next item that's on there is the welding lab intake and exhaust. So as you know, or as you may recall, the welding lab at the high school, the exhaust system is not quite working well enough when every student is welding. And so we received pricing from NASH to install an additional exhaust system. And this will actually come before the board at the December meeting. But this will address that issue that we're seeing there. Crenshaw, the gates for Crenshaw, this is, we talked about being able to kind of section off the parking lot so it's not accessible to the public at the Crenshaw parking lot throughout the evening or throughout the day. And so there's some additional gates going in there. The fire marshal, we've sent this to the fire marshal, and the fire marshal will, we will meet with him on November 15th, and then we'll be able to move forward with this project. Sheldon Lake Window Replacement. If you will recall, we had an issue with the manufacturing of the windows, and they degassed. So the gas that is between the two panes of window, the two panes of windows escaped, and so they're going to replace those windows. The manufacturer has actually gone out of business, and installation was not covered in the warranty, but the glass company is coming out over Thanksgiving and starting to replace windows. We are working with the glass company on an installation price, but we do need to get those windows replaced. And I know that installer is probably frustrated also because they're having to absorb some of that cost, but they've been very cooperative with us. The next thing is the King High School complex. If you'll notice, on the roads at the King High School complex, the, I think it's called thermoplastic paint has chipped off. It's come up, the yellow striping in the roads. And so there's not, the striping is no longer there, and it needs to be fixed. So what we're doing is we're actually submitting all of the forms to Harris County to turn over the roads and have them look at that. And we're waiting on Harris County to accept the turnover of the roads, but we have gone ahead and received a quote for the re-striping, whether that is that thermoplastic paint or whether it's regular paint. That has yet to be determined on what they would accept. The other items that we're looking at is the Sheldon Lake water. We're going to flush that over Thanksgiving, that whole campus again. We will remove two water fountains. We're going to review all of the copper insulation. And over the break, we will ensure that all integral grounds that are in contact with copper pipe are removed. We are also proceeding with the coating of the pipes over Christmas to address any electrolysis, and we're hopeful that that will end this issue. We do want to let the board know that we did flush this earlier, and we did water tests before flushing the water system. And then we did another water test after we flushed it. And then we put the filters on and did another water test. With the filters, all of the water fountains, all of the water in the school passed. But we wanted to be cautious and not run into this problem again down the road. So we need to address the problem and not address the problem through a filter. Okay? The next item is our King Middle School and King 9 generator. We've talked about this before. So Sand Tech has submitted a design cost. But I talked with LAN, and we went back to Sand Tech and talked about the scope of work, and they revised the quote. And we will bring forth a quote for that scope of work in December to the school board. Also, district-wide chiller maintenance. We've had Carrier come out and audit all of our chiller systems throughout the entire school district. And they've all been inspected, quotes have been received to renovate all the chillers. So administration is currently prioritizing the projects, and work should begin before the end of the calendar year on things that do need to be fixed. I know that Carroll Elementary, the compressors need replaced there. We can move forward with that. Additionally, we replaced the cooling tower at the Crenshaw complex over the summer with plans to rebuild two chillers this coming summer. I do want to let you know administration is ready to move forward with the replacement of one of those chillers at the central plant at this time, and we received a quote for that project. We will bring forward that quote to the board in December as an action item. That's to replace one of the two chillers at that complex so that as we go into the spring, we have one brand-new one and the other, the one that we're currently running on. And we'll be able to replace the third one in the future. But that way, we have a backup, and we can run that system on one. We can use the 2016 bonds for funding that renovation. And the next one is the dock server room. The maintenance, maintenance has installed a new condenser for the server room, and a purchase order has been issued to CMTA, start design drawings for a secondary system. We've had some concerns in that area where the air conditioner has gone out, and there's not a backup system for that particular room. And that room gets hot very, very quickly. It's come up to where it's about 100 degrees in there, and you can lose your data. So we need to put a secondary backup system there. Now, moving forward, looking at our 2022 bond. Go ahead. We're going 2016?
Yeah. So just sort of the welding labs. I mean, we spanned welding labs from the original design when we built them. Our houses have to see if, do you think, not calculated to know what we're going to use in exhausts?
And all honesty, I cannot answer that. I just know that that was the original system that was put in there, and it is not keeping up with, you know, the number of kids in there.
And then moving to the weld, the window replacement. So because, so we're going to absorb that cost.
We're not going to absorb the cost of the windows, but we may have to absorb some cost of installation. We're still working through.
And that's just because of the manufacturer.
My understanding is that the installation was not covered by the warranty. That that cost is not covered.
Okay, well, we have to provide that. Or why the installation wasn't covered with warranty. So we're moving to that. And the, so we have these, the road tripping, window replacement, office of water at SOD. All of these things were, now that we are handling, and we're having to go to the cost on those, is there plans somewhere down the road to try to recover any of this?
We will recover what we can. I'm not sure on the window installation, we'll be able to recover. Possibly what we need to do is to work with a vendor to reduce the cost to come to an agreed price, if that makes sense? Where that should not be absorbed solely by us as a district. Now, on that.
I think we should recover anything on, on these, on these, because that was some couple of your quotes.
Yeah, on the paint, what we're being told is that it is normal for paint not to necess, to adhere to new roads, the first coat, that after that first coat, oftentimes, you do have to go back with a second or third before that really adheres to that surface.
And then on the bond pass, and we're going to, we're looking at a 9th grade campus, is the generator at the 9th grade campus now? Will that be a necessity, wanting to move out, leave 9th graders out?
If we're going to use that as an educational facility in the future, I would have to answer that the, my understanding from the fire marshal is yes. I think a lot of it's going to depend on how the board chooses to use that facility in the future, but case is still there. And so it's something that the district needs to consider. You know, he's going to want that to meet standards, and that was one of the things that he brought forward as a concern. Now, with that said, you know, we're still going to be using that building in some capacity. And so, you know.
So it's going to still be required regardless of it's used in education, as an educational facility or a community.
Right, I think even if we're using it as a community facility, we would still want to have that, that capability, that we have a generator there for power, especially if we're using the kitchen areas for storing food, or if we were to have functions there. You know, if there was an emergency, you know, and, I mean, Lord forbid, let's say it's not a flood, but we were to open that building as a shelter, we may want to have that as a, you know, thinking of it as a shelter, having that ability to have a generator. I know, and I'm trying to think of a different, I was, I'm thinking of a different type of, you know, if it was a different type of emergency. Okay, I'll get some information and follow up with you, Mr. Rebus, about the installation costs. Okay? Okay, so the 2022 bond, hallelujah, passed. Okay, that's good. With that said, one of the first steps is the, you know, selecting a project manager. So I just want to remind the board, you'll kind of reflect with me for a moment, looking back. The board and trustees approved work authorization number five with L A N on March 1st, 2022, with the board workshop for the projects that were related and included in the May 2022 bond. These projects were also included in the November 2022 bond, although we did take some of them out. And we know that the bond actually passed. Therefore, administration only needs to authorize project commencement in order to move forward with using L A N as the project manager. And I'll let Dr. Davis kind of chime in here and talk with the board.
Yeah, I know, just wanted to remind the board, this is the first step. As you all recall, 2016 is just one of the first steps we took there. And of course, after the acts, they certainly assist us in relation to those more activities. So this is really one of the first steps. I want to make sure, you know, the board's fully authorized and informed, we're on the same page. So I want to understand that, that we plan to move forward, also make sure that's understood or not. And so that's really what that's about. So we need to have, we need to move forward with the board workshop. Currently, I didn't place the work for it, because we didn't start in 2022.
Should you have any, if the board has any specific questions regarding the work authorization, I do want to let you know that the board's attorney is here to talk with you in close session if you have questions about that.
The contract's been approved, I mean, all right, we're over there. One second.
It is.
We're on that, and then, okay.
That's right, so I want the resolution to move forward. Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood. I don't want anything to be said, move forward, I can get the message, that's it, all right?
All right, thank you. So looking forward, some of the first top priorities are our No Middle School addition, our addition at Cravens, our ninth and 10th grade campus, and then I want to get a roof analysis conducted throughout the district. We talked about chillers before, but we need to talk about roofs, just to let you know. So let me give you a little bit of background. The No Middle School addition, design is already in process. If you'll recall, we started that with Sand Tech. So we're at approximately 85% completion on that. We have a scope of work review scheduled for November 30th and December 1st to review the project, and F F and E, that's for. and F F and E, that's furniture, fixture and equipment, to make sure that we are ready to move forward. Our Cravens design is with Huckabee and we are kind, we're right between ninety and ninety-five percent complete. Uh, do want to let you know, we're going to be looking at the roof for Cravens as part of that project also. Um, and we are ready to go to permitting, but uh, we want to review that prior to moving forward. Now, with the ninth and 10th grade campus, looking back, just remember that we did have a list of architects that expressed interest. We narrowed that down for presentations and five architect firms were selected. So that was Sand Tech, Auto Art, Huckabee, IDG and G D P Group. Um, so the board will need to select A and E, that's the architecture firm, to begin the design. And I'd like to know how the board would like to proceed. Is this something you'd like to have included on your December agenda? Where you would rank the firms from those presentations that they did before? Uh, would you like to have those firms come back out? Thoughts on that? It's been a minute.
I'd like to see, I mean, if we can, if, I guess, going back, are we having a December workshop?
Yes, that's going to come up here shortly because.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's.
Yeah, I'm going to look at dates and Christmas party all at once.
We needed a December workshop.
Are we having a December?
Well, the, the suggestion will be to, to combine the, because again, this is everybody's.
Yeah, that's what I, yeah, well, that's what I mean, if we're having two separate meetings. Okay, so. Yes, that's, that's what I was thinking. But I don't know if we have a December or January, or if we, January to have that workshop exclusively for that. I'm just going to go back over what was on the list of what we, the latest list that we have in the building. And then if any changes from that, but I think, uh, December or January workshop.
I'll put that down for the January workshop. We'll get the firms back out here, uh, for that evening. Would we, the same five firms that we had? Did you want presentations, said refresher?
I think just maybe refresher.
Okay. Okay.
But if we could have for the December meeting, the information of who they are and kind of that way, we're a little bit more prepared for that. Or, or send you some stuff.
Okay. We have that.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we have all that. Yeah, just do the, or what, and then the list, uh, prior, you know, one, or, because I know we don't know that list from the last meetings before the, 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 the mail election.
Yeah.
We had. We said they changed that.
We have that in the rubric that the, the board can use to rank those specific firms.
And I, I guess, so that we're clear on the term, um, refresh, uh, we will provide that information to the board. The board will use that information for a discussion with question and answer between L A N and the district administration. Or would you like presentations from the firms to try and respond to any new questions or thoughts that you have?
Will we have information for December? Do we add all that?
Yes.
I guess we want to decide then, if we get a refresher for January or?
I don't know if you want the firm there for January.
So we'll do the refresher at the December board meeting. And then if you would like the firms to come out, you'll let us know and we can read, we can schedule that for January. Okay? Okay. And then the roof analysis, we're just going to have someone come out. We did look at all of the roofs across the district, make sure that, uh, if any repairs are made. The next item is there were some questions about the ag barn. So uh, what I did was I looked at um, a variety of things and when we talked to the teachers, the teachers had said, you know, they, an ag barn, they don't want it located near a residential area. Uh, I guess harassment of animals, vandalism, things like that. Uh, but if we were to consider building an ag barn in the future, we would need to consider things like accessibility, making sure the trailers can get in and out of the property, closeness to the school, safety, lot size. So what I did was I went through a variety of districts and what they paid. And so you'll see in 2012, we can be paid approximately fourteen million. If that facility was to be built today, you could almost double the price. Okay? Uh, 2022 Montgomery I S D, this was twenty-six million. 2020 was Tomball High School, that was four point nine seven million. And you'll notice at the bottom, if we would do that in today's construction cost, that would equate to eleven million dollars. And that was for just Tomball High School, not for their district. Klein Forest High School, uh, Klein Forest High School, just so that you know, has an enrollment of three thousand four hundred and eighty-seven students. So that's very comparable to the size of our high school. Their ag barn in 2020 cost ten million. And so you know that with inflation, that would be a significant upgrade. In 2021, Godley I S D built their ag barn, that was for five point two eight million dollars. And in today's budget, that would be six point five seven six million. Um, I do want to caution the board that Godley has uh, six hundred and fifty-six kids in the high school. The square footage of their ag barn was twenty-four thousand square feet, where our current ag barn is fifty-five thousand square feet. When you look at the, the area for the animals, the showroom and then the building in the front. Um, so if the board were to consider an ag barn in the future, you could be assured that you're going to be looking somewhere between ten and twenty million dollars. You would need to determine the scope of work, what type of accommodations uh, you would have depending on the animals. We would need to then consider enclosures, wash base, shearing areas, grazing pastures, loading and unloading areas, showroom, kitchen concessions, restroom, vet tech rooms, feed and tack storage. Um, what would be included in that? I do want to caution the board, um, as if this is a future consideration, that this was not included in the 2022 bond. And that this is a significant cost investment. And if we were to move forward, we would need to make a determination of where those funds would be drawn from. Any questions on that?
Just one more from the food.
Fifty-five thousand square feet, yeah. Uh, thank you to Fred Bauer, who went out and measured it today for me.
Got a video.
It's okay. And then we'll go to questions.
And you did all that in YouTube.
There is a really nice video in there that is not playing. So it is a very nice slide that has Happy Thanksgiving. Administration just wanted to wish the board Happy Thanksgiving. I hope that you have a restful break and get time to spend with your family and friends. Any questions regarding the board facilities?
Thank you very much. So we wish you happiness because you spend time with your family.
I'm going to be alarmed.
All right, thanking us, we'd like to circle out our information. That will be going to December agenda, the position for anybody to send in.
Madam President, we recommend that the board adopt the consent agenda items, uh, seven, eight, and we, and they have to be attached. We've got a part of the meetings. No, consider this.
I'm sorry, do you have any questions? Any other questions or comments on that? This week's.
I don't want to stay with it. You know, the first idea.
Yes, second. I'm sorry.
This person.
We're going to be going to new business, I don't believe, considered the approval of the 2021, 22 annual financial statement and audit report.
Madam President, we recommend the board trustees, we recommend that the, that the two thousand one through two thousand two financial statement and audit report be approved and the copy to be attached in a couple of part of the meetings.
Sorry.
Would you allow this archie, second minister, bring this, this report?
Yes, ma'am, we have our auditor, Mr. Luca Garcia, this, this evening and he's going to play short presentation and also do the audit highlights. And we don't have the final report already here, but I have a draft report in front of you for her.
Madam President, trustees, Dr. Davis, good evening. I'm here to give you the results of the financial statement audit and federal single audit for fiscal year 2022. I'll take you through the audit process, the results of the audit, go through some financial statement highlights and then into some required communications. Uh, members of the engagement team, in addition to myself, Eileen Complema de Lento was the senior manager in engagement, working very closely with the district through all phases of the audit. Gustavo Guzman is the senior associate and Tom Peterson was the concurring partner. He reviewed the annual financial report, key work papers and our audit files, the level of quality control. The audit process has two primary phases. The first phase of fieldwork is interim fieldwork, where we focus on the district's internal controls or the policies and procedures and processes that the district has in place in order to accurately uh, record transactions during the fiscal year. We also identify the major programs in the federal single audit during this phase of the audit and perform our compliance testing. Once the fiscal year is over and after the district has posted closing entry, we return toward the financial related portion of the audit where we focus on ending balances, your transaction classes, um, bearing the annual financial report. Uh, we perform a variety of analytical procedures, confirm balances with third parties, the state and your financial advisors and your legal counsel. Uh, we perform procedures over this entire time in order to opinion of audit evidence to express an opinion on the financial statements. Uh, because that ultimately what we're engaged to do is express an opinion on the financial statements. Uh, to give you an idea of the areas that we look into as part of the financial statement audit, uh, salaries and benefits makes up a large percentage of the district's budgets. We spend quite a bit of time working with human resources and payroll. Uh, payments to vendors and how those goods and services are procured is also part of the audit. I T, to the extent that uh, it relates to the district's ability to prepare timely and accurate financial statements. Uh, the district's significant revenue sources, including property taxes, state aid and grant revenues attendance, because that does have an impact on state aid, uh, the district's financial closing reporting process. And then because the district does collect its own property taxes, we do per, perform procedures in that area as well. As external auditors, we can issue a few different types of opinions, but I'm happy to report that our opinion on the district's financial statements is an unmodified opinion. So that's the best outcome in a financial statement audit. So within the district's annual financial report, at the beginning of the financial section, that's where you'll find our opinion with that unmodified opinion. Once this report is made public, the users of the financial statements will look to that letter to find that unmodified opinion and know that the financial statements have been fairly stated in all material respects and that they're prepared in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We also issue a report on the district's internal controls over financial reporting. Uh, we did not identify any weaknesses or deficiencies in the district's processes related to financial reporting, nor did we identify any compliance of those materials of the financial statements. And then the last report we issue is on the district's administration of its federal programs. In the federal single audit, we identified uh, these major programs listed on the slide, Twenty First Century, uh, the disaster grant, public assistance from FEMA, Esser Elementary and Secondary School, emergency relief, and then the special education cluster. Uh, our testing over these four programs did not result in any question cost or any non-compliance. So our opinion on the district's administration of these programs, for those requirements that are directed material to these programs is unmodified. So that's important because within thirty days, this report will be uploaded to the federal audit clearinghouse. And that's how the federal and state agencies become aware of how the district performed in the audit. Uh, the district's financial uh, statement of net position is the district's balance sheet. So these are all your balances of all your activities as of the end of the fiscal year. Total assets and deferred outflows totaled five hundred and twenty-six point two million. That balance is primarily comprised of your cash investments as of the end of the fiscal year of just over sixty-five million. And then your capital assets added depreciation, your land, buildings, vehicles, equipment, furniture, uh, four hundred and eight point one million. Your liabilities and your deferred inflows of resources totaled five hundred point nine million. Of that balance, that's primarily comprised of your outstanding bonds payable and an enterprise premiums of three hundred and eighty-six point nine million. And then the district reports two liabilities in this statement related to retiree benefits. Uh, the first liability is the net pension liability and that totaled seventeen point seven million. And then the net other post-employment benefit liability is thirty-two point one million. These liabilities aren't anything you'll ever have to write a check for. These are financial reporting uh, liabilities only. Uh, these amounts are, are prepared at the state level because of, the district is part of T R S, the teacher retirement system of Texas. So that plan has auditors and actuaries that remeasure this amount each and every year. These liabilities in your financial statements only represent your proportionate share of all the employers that participate in those plans. Uh, so overall, your net position at the end of the year was twenty-five point three million, which represents the difference between your assets and your liabilities and your outflows and your inflows. The district's general fund is its main operating account for fiscal year 2022. The general fund reported revenues of a hundred and fourteen point seven million. Of that amount, forty-nine percent comes from property taxes, forty-three percent comes from state aid. So that makes up the majority of your funding in the general fund. You have another five percent that's T R S on behalf, which represents payments made by the state to T R S. On the district's behalf, the fund, the money doesn't actually flow through the district, but the district nonetheless has to record that revenue. You have other uh, federal and miscellaneous state local funding that makes up the remaining uh, three percent of your revenues in the general fund. Looking at your general fund expenditures, those totaled a hundred and thirteen point eight million for fiscal year 2022. Sixty percent of that is related to instruction and related services. Twelve percent is maintenance and operations, another nine percent for instructional school leadership. And each remaining expenditure category is five percent or less. The general fund budget to actual, actual revenues were less than budgeted amounts by eight million dollars. Your expenditures were less than budgeted amounts by nine point nine million dollars. Overall, your revenues did exceed your expenditures. So you did have an increase in the general fund fund balance of one million dollars or an ending balance of forty-five point five million. Of that amount that gets reported in a few different categories. You have non-spendable fund balance of uh, point six million, restricted fund balance of point two million, unassigned fund balance of point eight million. And so those are amounts that have been earmarked for specific purposes. Doesn't mean that they've been spent. Uh, they can always be uncommitted, unrestricted or, or unassigned. And then you have unassigned fund balance, just forty-three point nine million or the portion of fund balance in the general fund that's available for spending on any lawful purpose. Now, the district's fund balance is, is not a savings account. This is your working capital. This is how the district operates day to day, pays employees, pays vendors. So that unassigned fund balance at the end of the fiscal year represented thirty-eight point six percent of your general fund expenditures. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends anywhere from sixty to ninety days. So that's twenty-five percent. So you can see that the district is at a healthy level. That's something that credit rating agencies look at very closely to see how much, uh, what reserve the district has in place in the general fund. And you can see what that unassigned fund balance has been over the last five fiscal years. Um, there was um, a dip there in, in twenty nineteen, there was an increase in 2019 and that's when the district changed fiscal year. So it had a ten-month fiscal year in 2019. So that explains that, that peak there um, in, in the chart. There's two more budgetary comparison schedules in the report for the breakfast and lunch program. Your revenues were greater than budgeted amounts by point nine million. Your expenditures were less than budgeted expenditures. Overall, you had an increase in fund balance in this fund of four hundred thousand dollars or an ending balance of one point five million. The debt service fund reported revenues of twenty-seven million, which was more than budgeted. Actual expenditures were less than budgeted amount by point six million. Overall, you had an increase in the debt service fund fund balance of one million dollars or an ending balance of twelve point five million. And then the last portion of my presentation, as part of the audit, we do review the district's accounting policies and the district is following all current pronouncements. During fiscal year 2022, the district did implement a new pronouncement related to how leases are accounted and recorded in the financial statements. So that did take effect in fiscal year 2022. Uh, another important note is that the financial statements do include estimates. So some of the more significant estimates you need to be aware of are anything related to state aid and the revenues and the approvals the district records in the financial statements are based on a variety of factors. Uh, so that's considered an estimate. Allowances for uncollectible receivables is based on historical collections of their property taxes. And then the third bullet there related to pension and other post-employment benefits. Uh, we talked about that a few slides back. That's the largest estimate in your financial statements because of, uh, that changes year to year based on assumptions, based on actuarial uh, results. So that is provided to the district by auditors and actuaries from T R S. I'm happy to report that we did not encounter any difficulties in performing and completing the audit. Uh, I would like to thank the district, Mr. George, Ms. Piazza, the entire business office for their cooperation. Anyone that we needed to meet with was made available to us. Any questions we had were answered. Any information that we asked to review was provided in a timely manner. So we do thank the district, uh, because we did complete the audit. We're here presenting the audit to you on time. The district has to submit this to the state by November 27th, which is a hundred and fifty days after the end of the fiscal year. Plus, there's a lot of submissions and other continuing disclosure requirements. This report is very important, uh, so for the. This report is very important for the district, and so there's a lot of people that are waiting to receive it. We didn't identify any material misstatements that we had to bring to management's attention, requiring any material adjustments. No disagreements of management on any matters related to the application of accounting principles or accounting estimates. We'll obtain that management representation letter at the end of the audit. And that will state to us that the district has been an open book. Nothing's been withheld that would materially mistake the financial statements. As far as we're aware, the district isn't consulting with any other auditors or accountants on any matters. And then the last bullet on this slide, we do want to serve as a resource of the district. So we do answer questions and provide guidance throughout the year. But at no time do we feel the way we answer or the position we take on any matter is a condition as to our retention as the district's external auditors. So that completes my presentation. If anyone has any questions about the report or the audit process, I'll be happy to take those questions at this time.
Great, Alan.
Yes.
I certainly want to put a good hand, thank you, Sharon, and to all of your team. And Dr. Davis certainly the cleverest person I've ever seen.
Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
We will leave on to board information, facts to report, investment report, but I expect there are other operating funds, job description, debt service, enrollment, and the discount report, and the bond updates. We'll save the rest for a closer session. All right, this time we're very close session pursuant to crisis gathering. Go to section 551, 071. I have consultation with the great attorney, 551, 072. To discuss the purchase of the securities that are under the property. 551, 074, for the purpose of considering the opponent and plaintiff's obligation. We are sorry that we use this case as a social and public policy. It's for the years of trying to protect us. A case about a lawsuit, including 551, 076. We understand the comments specifically taken before. Our implementation of security personnel devices at 7:30 PM.
See you.
Um, pass on Idris Dutton first. And then we go to personnel recommendations, Idris Dutton.
Madam President, recommend contract recommendations for 2022, 2023. We will hear the approval attached to the attachment of employment.
Next one is such, we want to see if there are any questions. Would you like to, Mr. President? Idris Dutton.
Member of the House, it's 21, 22, 5 minutes, we want to see if he can find a good cause to be a candidate for Dan Dixon. To Dan returning from the campaign on January 20, 2022. I would rather that he can probably sign on behalf of the board. The board should say for, for his certification with the government pension, member of the House.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas and Mr. Archie, please answer questions. All this in favor? Potential passenger news. Idris Dutton, is there the attach of the long hay?
Member of the House, if anyone in favor will vote for him, maybe 2005, you'll all agree with the attachment, member of the House.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Rivas and Mr. Archie, any questions or comments? All this in favor? Potential passenger news. Unnecessary business, and campus results, some place your hotel Monday, when you hear from them.
Same together, they told us it's coming, we only need two workers, at least, and not two workers.
They said after 2 o'clock Monday.
So we're thinking, we just need to know who could come up and count us a vote after 2. Probably the folks around me, maybe we'll post for 3, because I don't think I'm down, I would give it to 2.
I think, I think.
This will be hard, I think, I think.
I'm off for breaks.
I'm off too.
Yeah, fine.
No, I think this martini is good. See, she working now, so she can come on.
Now you're useful.
Yeah, so she can feel useful.
So send out, send both, both to 3. So who can be reminded, guys, remind anybody.
Just give us a few directions, we all work for you. Thanks a lot, I was expecting.
We're going after Thanksgiving holidays, and we work for the first week, 45. Um, and we're looking at doing one meeting for December the 6th, for December, is that good for everyone?
For December, we're going to workshop, and the board meeting, all of us, they heard. Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, December 6th, everything all together on the 6th, that's the thing, that's the thing, okay. And there were suggestions for recommendations for teacher, for relationship dates. For teacher candidates. You know, it's, you will adjourn at 8:00 to 6:00, can you have a chance to, have a nice day?
Thank you.
Enjoy our Thanksgiving, do nothing but, no, no. Y'all turn up for Thanksgiving.